I think we'll go ahead and begin. Again, my name is Will Jones. I'm the chairman of the Oklahoma County Planning Commission. And I'm calling to order the January nineteenth meeting. First item of business is a roll call. Eric, would you call the roll?
Yes, sir. Ms. Irene Martin?
Yeah.
Mr. Charles DePerey?
Here.
Mr. James Benson?
Here.
Mr. Will K. Jones?
Here.
Mr. David Martin?
Here.
Our next item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes from the December fifteenth meeting. I assume all of the commission members received copies. Are there any additions or detractions or changes to those minutes? Hearing none, we'll take a vote. Eric, would you?
I'll make a motion that we accept it.
I'll say it.
It's a good idea. Thank you.
Ms. Martin?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. DePerey?
Yes.
Mr. Benson?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
And Mr. Martin?
I'd like the record to show that Commissioner Vaughn is now with us and should be counted as present.
No problem.
Item number five is a discussion and possible action to approve or deny a zoning change from AA Agricultural and Rural Residential District to a planned unit development which is PUD 2016-04. This is an item that had been deferred in the past, and the applicant is the Laguna Trust[114.42][114.42]/ Crofton Toll Associates. Staff report?
Yes. This applicant is requesting another deferral. We sent a letter out with the packet that you should have gotten. They submitted that in plenty of time, and they're asking just for one month. The engineer is here if you have any questions for him.
I obviously did overlook that letter, and we did receive it, January ten. I'll entertain a motion to defer this item.
I understand.
Second?
Second.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. DePerey?
Yes.
Mr. Benson?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Commissioner Vaughn.
Thank you very much. Item number six is a discussion and possible action to approve or deny a zoning change from AA Agricultural and Rural Residential to CG Urban General Commercial and Office. This is item Z 2016-04. Staff report?
You received a staff report with your packet. Just to go over a review of what's been submitted and what Mr. Hoffgardner would like to do on the property. If you look to your packet there with the map, there's a map here to your right as well. Basically, what Mr. Hoffgardner would like to do is to take a piece of property that is currently zoned AA Agricultural and Rural Residential and rezone that to CG, which is Urban General Commercial and Office. What he would like to place there on the property is he would like to develop and operate a dance hall, saloon, with future possibility of a motel and gas station. As you can see here on the map, basically what he's preparing for is the construction of the turnpike. Basically, there's going to be an interchange there on Britton Road that's going to allow people to come on and off the turnpike at that particular location. Besides that, that's kind of all the information that we've been given by Mr. Hoffgardner. He is here to discuss the item as well.
Before we hear from Mr. Hoffgardner, Eric, in the staff report that you sent out, you have an enumeration of requirements that will have to be met. Have those... Has he started on that list? Is that completed? Has he completed those?
No, sir. Basically, those are the requirements that are going to have to be completed during the building permit process.
Okay. So, none of that has begun?
Correct. We just want to make everybody aware that that's what he's going to have to come into compliance with if this is approved as he moves forward.
Okay. Thank you very much. Are there individuals here that would like to speak on behalf of this proposal? Speak on behalf? I'd entertain anyone who would like to speak in opposition. Would you like to speak in opposition?
Yes.
Oh, you want to speak on behalf of it?
Yes, I would speak on behalf, please.
All right. Thank you.
My name is Bill Hoffgardner. Nice to meet you all, y'all. And I'd just like to have the change from residential to commercial, so possibly build a dance hall, a saloon. We have nothing like this out our way, so it would be great to have a place like this close to, you know, go dancing. I'm planning to have a family day once a week where, you know, the family can bring all... Everybody can come up there. No alcohol will be served, none at all. And kids can learn to dance and stuff like this. Right here is pretty much a dying tradition anymore, but kids can learn to two-step, stuff like this right here, mostly country dancing. And if that works out very well, I'd like to have a hotel built. That way, if my people are too tired from dancing and stuff, or too need-reated to make it home, a motel room would be a lot cheaper than a DUI. It would be in it a lot safer. And then if all that works out, maybe later on down the line, put a gas station in.
Let me clarify in my own mind that this non-alcohol would just be on the family day, right?
Right. It would be like a Wednesday or two. Yes, I haven't decided what day yet.
All right. Are there any questions?
I've got a question. Do you know exactly when the turnpike is scheduled to go in?
No, I don't. I had a plan to do this right here a long before. I was scared when they announced the turnpike that I was going to lose my land to the turnpike. But, you know, I had this here plan. I had this plan for ten years to just finally bought the land, you know, last April to get started on it.
Okay. All right.
No. They say maybe four, five years for the turnpike to even get there.
Five years, maybe. Okay. All right. Thanks.
Another question. Do they propose to exit the turnpike? Is that for certain to be a question?
That's on their plans. It's supposed to be probably about a quarter mile from me. A quarter to three is a mile.
Is this your...
It's one of the interchanges.
...turnpike authority? Your proposed plans, Eric?
Yeah, one of the... One of the interchanges is proposed to be on Britton Road.
Any other questions? Eric, I've got a question with regard to this. Dance hall slash saloon, it falls under what here? Participate and recreation and entertainment indoor? Is that what we're to understand?
Yes, sir.
Gas, saline sales restricted. What does restricted mean?
I'd have to look in the actual regulation itself, to be honest with you, but I'm sure it's just restricted as far as the type of vehicles. So, basically, what you have there is truck stops, which are all just your larger vehicles.
Yeah.
And I... My assumption is, without looking at it, would be that it would be per-passenger cars, vehicles, not eighteen-wheelers, larger vehicles like that.
And alcohol, beverage, retail sales covers the saloon? Is that correct?
Right.
All right.
Saloon and other things.
Another.
Right.
Okay. All right. Any other questions?
You are going to serve food here, too.
That's a plan. I'm working over the family and stuff like this right here to find out if it's going to be feasible to do that right there. I think it's going to be good because a lot of people, after they've drank a little bit, if they eat, it settles their stomach, and they feel a lot better about it. I really don't want food served there early for the fact that I don't want to clean up any throw-up or anything like that off the floor if somebody gets too crazy.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Another question. What's your timeframe for doing the project?
For getting the project done? Well, that really depends on my...
I mean, we can people come out and dance.
Oh, the time for the dancing?
I'm talking about having a facility.
Oh, okay.
To build.
It's probably still... It's probably... Yeah, probably still about three months off.
Pardon me?
Probably still about three months off. Now, I got to go in there and get the land ready.
Until you get ready to begin construction?
Well, I'll start clearing the land and getting everything ready to go right now. You know, finding out everything this guy has. You know, he threw at one deal at me about all the, you know, the things I have to do before I start building and stuff like this.
Right.
Well, I'm going to make sure I meet all of those first, and then go on from there.
Okay. So, you're by the end of the year, you're going to have the facility completed?
I hope by middle of summer. Actually, before then, but...
Other questions? Thank you very much. Anyone else wants to speak on behalf of this project in favor? Those who would like to speak against the project, if you come forward, state your name and your association to this discussion?
Good afternoon. John Dorman, and I am one of the owners of the property that sits immediately to the south of the proposed use. I'm one of four owners. Civil Dorman, Jack Dorman, Jr., and Robert Dorman are the other owners of the property. And I'm here in that kind of a dual capacity as a property owner and also as their attorney. We own... If I could step over to the map?
Sure.
We basically own everything... Whoops. Well, that didn't work. Well... We basically own the south, three hundred twenty acres. We start at Beale Road, and we go west a few feet to the intersection that looks the road. We have this half-section here. We also own the property, which is about a quarter of a mile west of him. And we have a half-mile range on Britton Road, and then it goes north a couple more miles. We are the property where most of the turnpike is planned to go. And we... I can just tell you, based on what I know right now, I don't know exactly what the exact alignment is going to be. He could be as close as a quarter mile to the turnpike. He could be as far away as a half. We have people coming in and out from EST, Poe and Associates, and Olson on a daily basis, so the alignment is still a little bit up for grabs right now. I agree that this area is going to change. I mean, there's no question that the turnpike is going to make a profound difference on what's happening out here. We've been in the ranching business there for about sixty years, and how much land we're going to have left after all of this is over with, that remains to be seen. I know that with the interchange and with the other items that are necessary for turnpike operation, we could lose, you know, a hundred-plus acres of land. So, it's all kind of speculative at this point. And that being the case, I think that maybe this application is a little premature. I understand his desire to try to develop this property. I mean, quite frankly, we will probably... I'll probably be back here in front of you myself once the turnpike is in place and once we kind of figure out what the development is going to be out in that area. It's entirely possible that we could see some service stations and some things like that out there, or it could... Nothing could happen. And if you look at the turnpike exit over on Hogback Road, it's been open for about a year and a half. There's no development over there right now. So, we don't know. So, I guess my first point is that this is all kind of speculative at this point. See, now, CG is a big use, and a dance hall and a bar, that's a very intensive use. And one of those out in the country can make a big difference on property values and everything else. So, it will affect how this property develops. Secondly, if you look at the CG zoning classification, there's more than fifty possible uses here by right. This is not... This is a big use. You have a lot of uses that are possible. And I heard you recite every one of the uses that would be allowable under that classification as a matter of right. And I would remind you that a lot of those are probably very intensive for this area because you do have adjoining residential uses to the west, to the north, and to the east even. And something like that would probably preclude any kind of residential use on our property to the south should we decide to develop it that way going forward. So, you know, I guess my point is that... I guess I would remind you that when you approve a zoning classification like CG, they're entitled to all the uses that are out there as a matter of right. And so, he's going to have a lot of options out here. You're effectively giving him a blank check in that regard because he will be able to develop any of those as a matter of right, provided that he meets your building code requirements. The other part that I found a little bit troubling when I was looking at your code is that you do have conditional uses. And one of the conditional uses is adult businesses. And under the code, the way you have it written now, they have to be located a thousand feet from a church, a thousand feet from a school, or five hundred feet from a platted... A house that sits on a platted lot. I would submit to you that whoever owns this property could very easily meet those conditions because there's no church out there, there's no school out there, and all of those lots that join that use are not platted. So, it's possible that even if, you know... I'm not saying he's going to do this, but if he sells the property to someone, they can come in and, under your code, under Article Five, if they meet these conditions, your county engineer is obligated to give them that permit. So, there's a danger here. And I mean, I'm not standing... I don't want to stand here and give you this parade of horribles that's going to happen, but, you know, there's... There are volumes on how bad those kinds of uses are on adjoining properties. I mean, it's a crime issue. It creates traffic problems. It is a known depreciator of property values. So, it's a legitimate concern. And I think if you look at your code, you'll see that, you know, this is an option that would be available to whoever owns that property. So, we're a little bit worried about that, too. Finally, and again, I know that you're not supposed to focus on this proposed use itself because anybody can come to the planning commission and say, "Oh, this is what I'm going to do with it." And then once you grant the zoning, they get to do anything that's there. He could change his mind. But if he does what he says he's going to do, you've still got problems. And again, if I could step over to the map, you've got about six homes between this property and the turnpike allowance. When that turnpike goes in, those people are going to be stuck between the noise from the turnpike all day long, and then they're going to have the noise from his bar all night. So, they're never going to get any relief. And so, I would submit to you that, you know, you're going to significantly diminish their quality of life when you do that. Bar's out in the county. Ask Sheriff Westall. It's a problem. It's... They're out there. They're kind of out of sight and out of mind, and they create significant costs for the county because the county has to continue to put resources out there and to deal with these problems. I mean, you've got all of the usual things that are associated with the bar. It will happen there because he told you there's going to be alcohol. There's alcohol. They're out in the country, 2:00 a.m. The sheriff's office is going to have to be out there instead of patrolling neighborhoods instead of taking care of people over in the northwest side of the county or other places. So, it's going to be a drag. Finally, I mean, I'll shut up. I could probably hurt all you want to hear. I'm not begrudging him the right to develop his property. I don't have a problem with him developing it. The area is going to change. I agree with that. But I think that CG is too much. I think that you're asking too much... You're asking too much of the adjoining property owners to give him such a blank check. He wants to put a gas station. He wants to put a hotel or something like that out there. Give him CL. Give him CH. Those are lesser categories. You can certainly do that. Those are much more reasonable under this circumstance. Otherwise, he's going to be able to go out there, or whoever buys it is going to be able to go out there and do a lot of things that are going to be... That are going to damage that area. And with that, I really don't have any other remarks.
You stay up for a moment. Do you have some questions?
Question. You said that the turnpike authority wasn't for sure on the alignment?
No, they're for sure on the alignment. We just don't know on that property where it's supposed to go.
Okay. Here's my question. I was told that they have already made most of the acquisition of the allowance.
They haven't purchased ours yet.
Pardon?
They haven't purchased ours yet.
So, that answers that question that the information our guys might supply after. So, that too. Is the alignment not settled, or is it settled?
I believe the alignment is settled, but I will tell you that we will account for two and a half miles of the twenty-mile turnpike, and they haven't paid me a dime yet. In fact, they haven't even shown me exactly where it is going to be on my property. So, it is... If it's possible...
Okay. I'm confused because the alignment's not settled. It's going to come on your property, and you're not sure where it's going to come.
The line that they drew on the map that everyone has seen shows it towards the eastern half of the property. Actually, if I can step by the map...
Okay. This would be the center of the property that's on the south side of Britton Road. It's going to split that half section in half. So, basically, there'll be about a hundred and sixty, a hundred and seventy acres over here, and then there might be about forty or fifty over on this side, depending on how wide it gets. On this side, they're supposed to get closer to the half section. This is the half-section line right here. They... The line is drawn on the map has it about, oh, four or five hundred feet away from where the fence line would be. That's one option. But they have also told us that they could go all the way over here, take out the barns. They might even take out this pond, which would put it right in the center. That would put him almost a half mile away from the highway.
So, as far as the property is that you own, you own, as it's drawn up there, the turnpike... The turnpike is drawn, you own property on both sides. Is that correct?
Yes, sir. We own both sides of Britton Road at that half-section line.
All right. Quite frankly, I'm hard-pressed to find a activity on this list that would outdo a saloon and dance hall. If you say he can do anything he wants on this project, but the list, it seems to me like he's sort of hit the gold standard.
And I'll certainly give him credit for coming in here and being honest with you about what his intentions are because I do think that's probably one of the more egregious uses that's in there. But there's also an outdoor entertainment general, and that will allow for something that would allow... You can have like five hundred people occupying a building like that. He'll never be able to make the parking requirements because if you've got to buffer it, you've got to develop parking, and then have a facility that'll hold five hundred people. Ten acres is going to be a pretty tight squeeze. And so, you know, the buffering may be the place where he hides the skimp. And I know that you have the requirements for vegetation. You have the requirements for site fencing, or excuse me, for site fencing and things like that, but that's going to be a problem. Heavy truck sales. You put a truck stop in there. You can put a lot of retail things in there that have lighting all night long. Car dealerships, things of that nature. I mean, lighting is a legitimate problem in zoning issues, in zoning cases.
Are there any other questions? Thank you very much, Mr. Vaughn.
Thank you. I have a question of Mr. Hoff...
Hoffgardner?
Yeah.
Would you come back up to the podium?
How long have you owned your property?
I bought it in April last year.
April last year?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Okay. And then, secondly, and maybe staff can answer, all the existing property owners were notified of this zoning change request, correct?
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Are there others who would like to comment on this project? Yes, ma'am. Come up forward. Identify yourself.
My name's Deborah McCoy. I live at ninety-four, twenty-five Ridge Road, which is directly west of the... Okay. Of here. My husband and I bought this property four years ago in August. We're both of us getting on up in the years and wanting to retire pretty quick. This short private section of Ridge Road is shared by six properties. Five have single-family home dwellings on them and are occupied by the owners. The sixth is the ten acres being considered here. The road is privately maintained by the residents. We chose this property for the peace, quiet, and privacy that it offers, largely because it is off of the main, Britton Road, and there are no businesses or commercial properties in the area surrounding it, a big contrast to the place we moved from, from South Oklahoma City. We would like for it to remain the peaceful, quiet, and private property that we love and want to retire on, agriculture and rural. We do not wish to share fence lines with any urban general commercial and offices. This is district property. The township of Jones wanted to annex this and the surrounding properties a mile deep along either side of Britton Road, approximately six square miles, from the east side of the current city limits, east to Luther Road, into the township of Jones last summer. The property owners and residents of this area convincingly said no, showing their overwhelming desire for this area to remain agriculture and rural residential and unincorporated. We believe that they allowing this rezoning and subsequent construction of a dance hall, saloon, hotel, restaurant, gas station, convenience store, or other commercial enterprise will disrupt the peace, quiet, and privacy of our private road, our rural neighborhood, its residents, and the residents in the surrounding areas. We believe that it will bring with it an increase in traffic, pollution, noise, and crime to our peaceful, quiet, and private section of northeast Oklahoma County. We sincerely ask for your consideration of our concerns and ask that you do not allow this agriculture and residential property be rezoned urban general. You'll have to excuse me. I'm not very good at public speaking. Haven't been to bed yet. I work nights. That's a letter my husband wrote to me. He couldn't be here today, so...
Thank you very much. Are there any questions?
Yeah, I've got a question. If you could... Now, I'm looking at this map here, and you say you're directly west of this...
I am directly west of it.
Okay. And you said your address was Ridge Road, but is your driveway off of Ridge Road, or is it...
Yes, our driveway is off of Ridge Road.
Okay. I'm trying to... Okay. Is this your...
The property behind you.
Oh, this is Ridge Road.
This is Ridge Road. I'm like... The next one right here is right here.
Oh, you're right here.
That's my property right there.
Okay. All right. Okay. Thanks. I saw that other road there, and I wasn't sure what, you know, which was Ridge Road.
I understand that this... There may be some more questions for you, ma'am, if you'd like to... If you don't mind waiting just a moment. This is an unincorporated, unplatted group of houses. Is that correct?
As far as I know, yes, sir.
Okay. All right. Are there any further questions?
Question. Did you talk to other neighbors?
Got two of them with me.
No, I'm talking about there's quite like five residences nearby.
We... There's... The people that we bought our place from are here, but we haven't talked to anybody else.
I mean, there's what, five or six residences within...
Yes.
A mile of this?
Mm-hmm. The ones we've talked to are the ones right affected, right there on Ridge Road.
Right. And they all share your...
A couple of them do, yes.
Any other questions? Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Are there others who would like to comment? Yes, sir. Identify yourself and your...
My name is Greg Stevens.
Would you repeat that so...
My name is Greg Stevens. And I own the property south of what she owns. And we've been there seventeen years, come June fourth. And what the gentleman was saying before she came up, before he came up, I agreed And what the gentleman was saying before she came up, before he came up, uh, I agreed with what he said. You know, everything about having a bar and a saloon, people coming and going by my property. You know, we haven't had any crime problems out there for almost seventeen years now, and I don't wanna start now. I don't have much to say, so...
Any questions? Thank you very much, sir. Are there others who would like to speak? Yes, sir.
My name is Kevin Henderson. I own the property that will be just north of the ten acres that he owns. And like they were saying, that we do have a peaceful, peaceful land, peaceful property around that area, there's really no crime or anything. And I grew up in Oklahoma City, north, south side of Oklahoma City, and I know that where there are bars, there's gonna be crimes, there's gonna be people drinking, and we do own that private road, and I know they'd be all down to the cul-de-sac doing all kind of different things, and my property butts right up to the back of that. And so, that would mean that no matter where it is, they would have view of my property, they would be able to come onto my property if they so choose to do. Um, and I would just like to keep it, like they say, peaceful as it was and as it's been. I've been there for eight years now, and there's no problems out there whatsoever.
Any questions? Thank you very much, sir, appreciate you taking time. Are there others who would like to speak, uh, regarding this proposal? Hearing none, seeing none? Uh, counselor, do you have a comment? Would you please?
I would urge Planning Commission to consider the compatibility of the proposed use with the existing property use, and to also consider that, it's, I know we don't have a really big map, but I'm not aware of any other similar uses or zoning changes in the area. So, it, if you would grant such a zoning change, you are setting a precedent and the ability for future zoning requests, um, consistent with that, so, that's, those are my observations.
What do we do, um, say, when Mr. Dorman comes in, uh, and decides that he really doesn't mind having CG along his, in his property, along the exit area? Or one of these other homeowners, uh, uh, how long down the road do we try to restrict this for this piece of-
Well, I, I would urge Planning Commission to, um, reconsider, um, its master plan after the exact location of the turnpike is established, and all the properties then acquired, and to determine whether or not it wants to develop this part of the county as commercial or light commercial, and which aspects it wants to retain as residential, um, and retain that particular flavor of neighborhood. But, Mr. Jones, you've been on this planning commission longer than I've been assisting this, this board, and I remember your concerns about spot zoning. And I'm afraid that this, this proposed, it's not really proposed now, it's coming.
Here.
Uh, the turnpike's gonna change the character, clearly, but I think that my recommendation would be, again, that the Planning Commission move along with that change and reconsider its master plan before it begins spot zoning, particularly in a residential area.
Thank you very much. Thanks, ma'am. Any other comments? Commissioner, do you have anything to say? Okay, good. Any other comments? I would entertain a motion, uh, to either approve or deny a zoning change from AA agricultural and rural residential to CG, uh, urban general, commercial, uh, and office. Uh, as you make your proposal or recommendation, or, uh, the word left me, um, keep in mind this list. And, uh, comments? I would entertain a motion-
I'll make a motion to deny a zoning change from AA agricultural and rural residential to urban general, commercial, and office.
Do I hear a second?
I'll, I'll second that motion.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we deny a zoning change from AA to CG, uh, on this item. Is there discussion? Discussion? Hearing none, we'll call for a vote.
Ms. Martin?
Aye.
Mr. DeFurier?
Yes.
Mr. Benson?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Commissioner Vaughn?
Motion, uh, has passed, and unfortunately, sir, we've denied re- rezoning your property. Thank you to all of you who came and your interest in this, this program and project. Item number seven is a discussion and possible action, uh, to receive the two thousand sixteen fee fund report. Um, take a look at it, and then I'll entertain a motion to receive the fee fund report. You got any comments on it, Eric, the, are we going up, we going down?
I have it down from previous months, but it's still good.
Still good, I see that. I'd entertain a motion to receive it.
I move to receive the report.
Second?
Second.
All those, uh, in favor indicate by roll call.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. DeFurier?
Yes.
Mr. Benson?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Commissioner Vaughn?
Passes. Uh, item number eight is new business, uh, uh, call your attention to the comments regarding new business. Do you want to have any new mi- business?
Is it appropriate to, uh, have Gretchen's, I like Gretchen's idea, this turnpike's gonna happen, the issue that we, that's on front of us today, is you're gonna have a lot more of them, all the way from the northern boundary of the county down to I forty. Uh, and I think Gretchen's advice, very sound, being new on the commission, I'm not that familiar with the master plan, but, uh, I would, uh, like the idea of having staff take a look to see, you know, come back to us with a recommendation from a professional standpoint, if that is quite as merit. Because we're gonna have, I mean, we've had two gentlemen here, two property owners, one that wants to develop immediately and another prospectively, and, uh, it just, to me, it'd be some guidance for us on down the road. And I'm sensitive also to all the people that went out for the quietness of the countryside, uh, like many of us did, and then next thing you know, on behold, uh, you have to put up a, you know, turnpike sign in your yard or something like that, but it's inevitable.
Why don't we ask Saf to put on an agenda, I am next month to discuss-
Yeah.
How to implement it, and whether or not is the intent planning commission is forward with that?
Excellent idea, um, as always, your advice is appreciated.
Thank you.
And, yes, uh, we cannot discuss it now, but having not had it on the agenda, but we can, uh, put it on the agenda for next month, or have to have it done, so Eric, uh, be, be ready. I know, too, that you may not know that we're in the midst of the revision of our master plan, and so that, uh, this could very easily, or may already, be part of what's, what Eric is looking at. Uh, so, but we'll have him give us a report next time. Anything else that anyone would like to discuss here as far as new business? Hearing none, I would entertain a, a motion for adjournment.
I move.
Second?
I'll second.
Uh, roll call, please.
Ms. Martin? Mr. DeFurier?
Yes.
Mr. Benson?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Commissioner Vaughn?
Thank you very much. Thank you to all of you who came.